To order. At this time, we're going to close the public input, but I do want to say thank you to everybody here. I mean, this is a testament to our community that we have so many people that care enough to come out and share their input with us so that we can use that as part of our discussion. So, thank you. We really appreciate it. All right, we're closing the public hearing. The next item on our agenda is to actually have our commission here review for official action and discussion.
Madam Chairman.
Yes.
Rachel and Jacob, could you quickly outline those compromises that you felt you've made again? I want to make sure we understand them.
Should I say my name again? Okay. Rachel Hodge, 6716 Nickel Road.
Jacob Longley, 6716 Nickel Road.
So, this is in our list. I know it was a controversial topic, but having families use the Lakeside entrance was one of them. And just to reiterate, our drop-off and pickup times are 8:30 a.m. to 9:00 a.m. and 3:00 to 3:30 p.m. At the moment, it's actually 10 minutes shorter than that, and I don't know whether it's better to be shorter or longer, but we can condense that or elongate it if that helps anything. Taking additional safety measures to ensure appropriate driving. I know at the last meeting, we discussed better enforcing the speed limit, which we don't know what the best way to go about that is. We brought that up in the fall. We were concerned about it ourselves because we do have children. And we feel that there are many people bypassing Eagleview Elementary that aren't our families, that are not honoring that speed limit, or whether it be restricting or lowering the speed limit. Another thing that we had listed was foregoing the use of land that's across the street from us. There's a small parcel that's connected, but across the street. I often feel at times that families in the neighborhood or people driving past might feel nervous if our children are playing near that area. And we do want to work on that space with our funding to make it feel safer, whether it be fencing, or signage, or whatever it is. We're willing to do anything. And then limiting the number of students per day to 24 and committing to never requesting to expand that number.
Thank you.
Yes, you're welcome.
Any other questions or discussions?
One of the things that's tough to look at is that we do have zoning rules and laws and whatever. And is there land in the community that is zoned appropriately that could have been appropriately used? And the reason I raise that is that I was involved with the long-term planning, of which everybody was welcome to be involved and have input. And one of the conclusions of that was, if you got rules, you should have enforced them. So, was there available space properly zoned when this thing got started?
Rachel Hodge, 6716 Nickel Road. When I started this back in 2018, I was fresh out of college. If I had any idea that it would grow this quickly and reach this many families and that the need in our area would be this great, I would have searched for a commercial property, absolutely. But we found this piece of land, and we love it, and we love our neighborhood, and we want to preserve that, and we don't want to damage that. But I do want to say too, that if our school goes beyond what we even think right now we can manage, we are... If we wanted to exceed beyond 24 students per day, we would search for a commercial property to make that happen. But at the moment, this is what we feel is the right step for us.
Do you... Are you aware of land that would be appropriate within Breezy Point that is properly zoned at this point?
No.
You're not aware of it, or there is none?
I'm definitely not aware of it. There may be some, I guess. Yes.
Thank you.
My question to Jerry. Now, an interim use, is that... That's just for a couple of years?
Typically, it's for five years. You could... You can set any limit that you choose, the board can, but typically, it's for five years. There's a limit. Once it goes to the end, they would have to reapply to get it extended. If, in fact, they were to sell the property and somebody else came along, they would have to go through the same process that they're going through today to continue that operation. It wouldn't be something that's automatically passed along and approved. An interim use is just like a conditional use, and you could put as many conditions on it as you want, or you feel that are appropriate. The only difference between an interim and a conditional is the fact that the interim carries a time limit, a specific time limit.
You know, I guess my concern is I know you guys have a big, you know, growth here going on and, you know, shortage of daycare and everything that's going on. And I'm thinking maybe, well, is this something that you might want to crease down the road? And, you know, maybe a bigger, you know, piece of property might be, you know, something maybe look at to see what is out there and, you know.
I do have a question. How many staff do you anticipate having for 24 students?
Rachel Hodge, 6716 Nickel Road. For 24 children, we would have two classrooms and three teachers within each classroom. There's also a potential of having a specialist, a yoga specialist, coming in once per week, but it's not a full-time position.
So, six?
Six, including Jake and I.
Thank you.
Madam Chairman.
Yes.
I would move the approval of the interim use application of Rachel, Hodge, and Jacob Longley. And to approve the conditions outlined in the city planner... outlined by the city planner be placed on this application for a home occupation.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
We have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All not in favor, say nay.
I had a question, but we didn't put the number of employees in.
Yes. Well, I intend for the number to be six in the...
Just to... Let's clarify. I know there was some discussion about the using one leg of Nickel Road only. I know that was an issue. A number of employees would be an issue. I think there was hours of operation. I don't think that was specified in your motion. I think you need to do that, if you're going to specify hours of operation. I think there's the number also. I think that Rachel offered the 24 rather than the 28 or the 30. So, I think you really need to pare that down a little bit and get down to the nitty-gritty to say what you really want to accomplish.
Do you want to amend your motion to include the specifics?
I have no problem amending the motion to include those conditions that Jerry just outlined, those additional conditions that Jerry just outlined.
Can you outline the specifics on those for number of employees, hours of operation, pickup times?
What are your intended hours of operation, Rachel and Jacob?
Rachel Hodge, 6716 Nickel Road. Intended hours are 8:30 to 3:30, Monday through Friday.
Okay. I would include those, or that as the business hours? Or hours of operation? Six employees?
So, if we can itemize down this. Item number one, as written. Item number two. As you're making the motion, do you want to specify the number of clients?
Yes. Interim use permit limited to licensed daycare facility serving 24?
Yes.
Okay, 24 or fewer clients? I have no problem with this permit expiring on the 31st... On December 31st, 2027. Hours of operation?
8:30 to 3:30.
One more time, Rachel?
8:30 a.m. to 3:30 p.m., Monday through Friday. Do you want to state that for the record?
Hours of operation, 8:30 to 3:30?
Yes.
Okay. The signage, not to exceed six square feet and shall not be internally lit. Operators of the facility to encourage patrons' usage of western leg of Nickel Road for ingress and egress to the facility? Yes.
We're willing to eliminate that if that's not in favor of most people, but that was our suggestion, yes.
Isn't it stated to encourage, doesn't say you got to do it?
Correct.
Encourage it.
Yes.
Jerry, is that in mind, what you were talking about?
I just put these out there as potential. You can amend or change as you wish.
So, do you agree with that wording, or do you want to reword?
I have no problem with this wording.
Okay. Item seven.
Annual septic tank compliance. Six employees.
Is that including ourselves? Yeah, okay, perfect.
And then, did you want to specify pickup times or drop-off times outside of hours of operation, which I assume was...
I don't see a need for that.
Do you want to specify anything with the land access across the road, that that would not be utilized at this time? Do you want to include that?
Sure.
Is there a time limit to that usage?
I assume that time limit would be the... Be the term of this interim use permit, correct? Would be the five years?
The terms would go for five years.
Right.
If in fact...
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
If, in fact, they didn't adhere to the terms, you would have the ability to call them in or revoke the permit at that time.
And in terms of the land across the street that is connected to our parcel, my intention in that was stating that with our funding, we want to, within the next six months to a year, create that space to be more safe and then to access it again. So, my intention was not to not use that space for five years, but if that's what we need to do, I'm open to that as well.
Do you want to address that in your motion?
No.
Leave that off?
Yes.
Okay. Is there anything else you want to address in the motion, or the amendment to the motion?
Nothing, but I'm open to any other conditions that anybody...
Question some people brought up is, you know, how can we monitor this? How many heads are coming in and out of there?
I heard Rachel say that your daycare licenser does that, correct?
Yes, we have one to two annual inspections. One is unannounced. We keep files for every child that's in attendance. We have paperwork showing everything, so there's no way that we could have beyond our limit.
So, you have to show attendance, daily attendance records to the licenser?
We don't have daily attendance records, but we do have each child's schedule and their time of attendance with, like, a monthly range, so that they know who is there and which days. And when they have an unannounced visit, they have us pull out files for each child that is in attendance that day to prove that we are in compliance.
What do you think, Lee? Does that take care of it?
I mean, I don't know what our boundaries are. Is it something that we can watch? I mean, I know it's a state thing, you know, but, you know, as a city and the residents too, I mean, I don't know.
We are willing to track attendance if needed.
I'd say kind of like anything else, we have... We don't monitor every person's property for a variety of things.
Right.
Well, I'm good with those conditions.
So, I'm just going to repeat back that we have an amendment to the motion. I'm going to read through what that amendment is. Basically, it's verbatim on item number one. On item number two, limiting the daycare facility to serving 24 or fewer clients. The interim use permit would expire on December 31st, 2024. Hours of operation?
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven, thank you. Hours of operation would be 8:30 to 3:30 Central Time. Sign for this facility would not exceed six square feet and would not be internally lit. Operators of the facility would encourage patron usage of the western leg of Nickel Road for ingress and egress to facility. There would be an annual septic compliance. Number of employees would be limited to six, including the owners. There would be... Let's see, that was actually everything that I see on the motion. Is that correct?
Yes.
So, we have an amendment to the motion.
I'm sorry, could I add one thing? Can we actually remove the encouragement to enter the west leg from the permit? Can we do that?
Tell me why, Rachel.
I don't think it's in the best interest of our neighborhood, as I thought it was.
Okay.
It was my intention to do something good, and I didn't consider all of the perspectives, and I don't want it to be included if possible.
Okay.
Yes.
If I'm hearing correctly, that's what I'm hearing from others also, that?
Yeah.
Okay. I have no... I have no problem removing that.
So, to then go back to the amendment to the motion.
Thank you.
I'm just going to repeat it back for clarity. Number one, item number one is verbatim. Item number two, 24 or fewer clients. Permit expiring December 31st, 2027. Hours of operation, 8:30 to 3:30. Sign would not exceed six square feet and would not be internally lit. There would be an annual septic compliance, six employees, including the owners. Is that correct stating for the motion?
Yes.
All right. Do we have a second to the motion?
I'll second it.
We have a second? At this point, we do not have the ability for public input, so we're in the stages of a motion. So, we're going to have to ask then, for now that we have a second to the motion, to take a vote. So, the vote, all in favor of passing this motion, say aye.
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 A not in favor, say nay. And the motion is passed. All right, thank you all. Next item on the agenda is a discussion for the pods container storage. And so, with this, Jerry, do you want to take over with your input?
I intended that to go a little smoother, but I guess that was impossible. Thanks for your participation.
Let's take a couple of minutes while they clear out, otherwise, we're not... We're going to be fighting that.
We're going to take a two-minute recess here while the room clears.
Another, or should we just can it and leave it the way it is? And we do have a couple in town.
So, are there new requests, or are they more people bringing up existing potential violations?
Well, there's...
Both.
Both, yeah, actually. Quite frankly, there's interest in bringing them in. And it's both a residential and a commercial request that we've got. We do... One of the requests that we got was, can I bring a pod into my house? No, we can't, but, well, why does the airport storage have two? He brought his in after the ordinance. He was not aware of the ordinance. They brought it... They came in and they showed up when all the trees got cut down, quite frankly. Otherwise, you wouldn't have seen them. So, you know, if we choose to leave the ordinance the way it is, I think we're going to have to address airport storage and get them removed. And I know he'll be in front of you, making a plea to say, well, jeez, I need those as part of my business, and they're integral part of my storage business, et cetera, et cetera. So, it's kind of the dilemma that I'm in. It's kind of pickle in the middle at this point and looking for some guidance. One of the things that I thought about is there was... Seemed to be a consensus that they were somewhat ugly. And, you know, as I drive around and looking and I've seen some that you don't even know that they're there, quite frankly, because they don't have a bunch of lettering on it and they're nature colored, you know, they're tan colored and whatever. So, one of the things I thought about was maybe if you allow them, you specify color and you specify that they can't have lettering, that type of thing? Just an idea.
Airport storage, is that zoned commercial, then?
It's zoned airport.
Okay.
Which is basically a commercial zoning that allows hangars and storage and that kind of thing.
Well, there is no... Nothing stated for commercial, that they can have them, or is that more of a, you know, a single or residential?
Right now, you can't have them anyplace in town, other than on a temporary basis for a construction project.
No matter how it's owned?
No matter how it's owned. That is the way the ordinance is written. And there's a copy of the ordinance in your packet.
So, I think... I'm kind of wrapping my head around this because pods, I think of very much as like the temporary storage, but what you're saying is too, we could make something where it is a more non-ugly storage.
Well, quite frankly, somebody can bring a shed in.
Right.
And it may be uglier than what that pod is, but we have no control over that. So, it's kind of a catch-22.
Yeah. I'm just envisioning if the resort decided, or, you know, just because they're big and picking on them, but if they decided to put up a bunch of pods in their parking lot for storage.
Well, and I think that was... That's the other thing. I think you could probably limit them to properties, you know, limit it to one. I think a good practice would be if you allowed them, that they'd be a conditional use permit, so they'd have to go through the process, and they know what the conditions would be of any approval.
Madam Chairman? I'm trying to think of why a commercial property wouldn't be okay with a pod being temporary there, just like it would be in a residential.
I think it's temporary, and a commercial property today can have it as a temporary type thing for a construction project.
Right, right.
I'm talking about something that is temporary becomes permanent.
Exactly. I might have given the impression that I was open to a permanent use of pods in a commercial area last time. Now that I've thought through this and read through the ordinance, I would not be in favor of that. I would be in favor of this ordinance staying as it is.
I'm leaning more towards that direction myself, just thinking if they want a permanent storage, then a portable unit, the definition that we have in here as a portable unit would probably not be the fitting piece of it. Do we have something in there for the... If a commercial area wanted to add additional storage, I assume there is permanent structure options potentially available, depending on the zoning, in that wherever they happen to be?
I see people wanting to treat them as an accessory structure, quite frankly. No different than a detached garage, or detached shed, or whatever. I just see people doing, you know, wanting to do that.
I think because they're pretty cheap. I mean, they're pretty affordable to buy or rent, but a lot of people are buying them because, I mean, you can, for two, three grand, you can buy all these pods, you know, so...
Well, you used to be able to do it for two or three grand.
Attractive for that, but, yeah.
Is there anyone on the commission that would like to see something written for commercial use at this time?
No.
You know, the only thing is that, you know, if we're seeing a big demand for it, you know, commercial prop, you know, businesses, that they're asking to do that, or, you know, or are we opening up a can of worms?
Tracy, what do you think?
I'm generally opposed to portable on-demand storage pods, period. I shouldn't say that for any kind of permanent use. Temporary for construction or temporary storage is one thing, but permanent use, I'm opposed to.
So, I think at this time, we're basically saying, let's just table it and...
Consensus is that the ordinance stay as it is.
Yes.
And enforce it.
Cross that bridge next month when you're not here.
Jerry, I would assume the enforcement is in reaction to a complaint.
It's complaint-driven. We don't... We're not running around looking for problems. When we do get a complaint, we do have to react to them.
Does the airport... Does the airport now know that it's supposed to be temporary?
Yes.
Okay.
So I think the thought is that if they want to make their point, they can come argue that point?
I suspect that he will want to make that plea, so, and that's his right to make that plea. I, I don't have a problem with that. Up until this point, he's been really good to work with.
Well, I think we'll table it for now, and then move on to open forum number two. Is there anyone out here who would like to step up and speak to anything on the agenda that hasn't already been discussed? I hear of no one, so.
We will be advertising for a planning commissioner, so if you know individuals that live in the community, please, Tracy's indicated that this is his last meeting.
This is it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tracy.
I resign.
We're going to miss you, Tracy.
Oh, yeah.
Patrick, it's your last meeting also, correct?
I resign.
We're losing two great people. You can't resign. We don't accept the resignation. But thank you, thank you both.
Can't move.
I think Barbara's got something to say about that.
I think so.
All right, well, we're going to close the open forum. Is there any other business that we need to discuss?
Just, just one thing. I, I need to thank Tracy for his years of service, and I, I've really enjoyed working with Tracy. He brings a different perspective to a lot of things, and, and I think it's necessary. I think he's a valuable addition to this commission.
I echo that. I've learned a lot just by your ability to speak your mind and not be afraid to say.
He's also a great neighbor that I'm losing.
Well, I thank everybody for the opportunity. It's been an enjoyable opportunity, even dealing with you guys. And I wish you well, Patrick. You haven't given us a report as to what you're going to do, but.
Cut trees and logs and the property.
Whatever he wants.
Thank you, Patrick, for keeping us in line and giving us direction. I know, I appreciate that, and you've got years of knowledge that we truly value.
And I appreciate you guys and your decision-making process, because I don't get too factual at times.
All right, well, we're going to adjourn this meeting. Thank you, everyone.